Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We'll bring the meeting to order for the June 22 regular City Council meeting. Madam Clerk?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Mr. Harper, is there a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Avery. There's no closed session report this evening.
All right. Now is the time for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Reverend Dr. George Akusi, St. John the Divine Episcopal Church, Costa Mesa, will provide the invocation, and Councilmember O'Neil will lead us in the pledge.
Let us pray. A prayer for productive discussions. Lord of wisdom, we pray that you will bless this meeting tonight. Help all of us have fun yet productive discussions that will broaden our perspective. Help us to take the various ideas presented and think of ways to flesh them out. If we do disagree, let it be on the content and not personality conflicts or power plays. Help us to resolve any dispute gracefully, be creative problem solvers, and have great team spirit. Help us to listen and digest and find principles that we can call all, we can all agree on, and put these into action. Almighty God, today we thank you for all the good things you have done for us in this city of Newport Beach. We pray that the process of vaccinations will continue and that our people, including the poor and the homeless, those in the facilities, will be covered because you are a God of justice. Continue to protect our roads, our homes, our families, our employers and employees, our businesses. Protect and guide our men and women of the police force, the fire department, first responders, and the city leaders we have today. God of peace, we have come united in passion and purpose. We pray for open hearts and minds that will promote and accept better ideas. We ask for humility to accept and learn from necessary correction. Dear God, we lift up this meeting to you. Be in our midst. Bind our hearts and minds by your spirit, for we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. I salute the greatest symbol of freedom in the world. Ready? Begin.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now we're on to council announcements and oral reports from council members on committee activities. Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes. The mayor and I, this morning, went over to the Newport Beach Junior Life Guard. Opening day, so we had their, let's see, I'm going to pull up the statistic from our fire chief. We have 1,652 junior guards this year, which is a record by around 300 junior guards. We had 796 this morning, 856 this afternoon. The older kids are As in the Newport Pier, and the rest are over at the Balboa Pier. And I would like to just remind everyone watching, please, 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 remember junior guards are in your midst. Drive safely. And also, if you are a parent of a junior guard and you have given them an e-bike, I strongly encourage you to spend time teaching them that the stop sign is, means stop, and that a helmet is a good thing. My family, we also attended the Balboa Bay Resorts Father's Day Car Show this weekend. Fantastic. Thank you, John Wortman, in particular. Attended the art show over at the Board Club. Thank you, Peter Beldon. And then attended the Bay Shores opening, the Oasis Sailing Club opening with councilmembers Dixon and Brenner and our mayor. We had the Newport Harbor High School Mentorship Program Annual Lunch. We had a TCA board meeting. The grand jury just released a report discussing the finances of the TCA, which highlighted, at least in their parts where it was not positive, but at least in part, the positive discussions did discuss some of the debt management policies that this city helped spearhead. And then I'll take a quick point of personal privilege and say to Ryan Crowser, congratulations on breaking the world record in the shot put. I am so excited that that record has been broken. And he does not, he has no connection to Newport Beach, other than the fact that he now is a world record holder. And I don't think shot put has ever been congratulated from this dais.
Did you, were you the previous record holder?
I was not. I came, I came close, within at least 30 feet of, so to Ryan Crowser, congratulations.
Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. As Mr. O'Neil just mentioned, many of us attended the opening day of the Oasis Sailing Club. It's always a great reminder of the wonderful opportunities available to our residents 50 and older at Oasis. And the Sailing Club is self-financed, self-supporting, and a wonderful, wonderful benefit for people to enjoy sailing into their, into their later years. But that's always fun every year. And the aviation committee met last evening. Mr. Blom and I conducted our, I hope it was our last Zoom meeting, and we can get in person going forward. I'm so pleased with the members of the committee, the community members are all on assignment on ad hoc committees relative to flight paths and noise and quiet air programs and government relations with the county and FAA. Everybody has an assignment and is hardworking. And we spend nearly two hours of every meeting going through the updates and the reports and the work in progress. So it's very satisfying. And our, obviously, our goal is to work with the carriers and to reduce noise impacts in our community. And we'll get there. So, thank you. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Blom?
I have nothing, Dan.
Councilmember Duffield?
Thank you. Kind of excited to finally announce that a portion of our bay has been approved. What I'm talking about is the top of the bay where the transient mooring field is, we're trying to get approved. 15 years ago, Seymour Beak at a harbor commission came up with the idea. And we were told immediately by staff and others, you guys weren't here then, though, it was 15 years ago, that it would take an act of Congress to get that done. And basically, what we're trying to do is allow a voter from another harbor come in and anchor at the top of our bay near Lido Village, near the, and now we have a public dock there that we just built. And they can offload there and spend money on shore. And there's lots of things to do. There's West Marine there, of course, movie theater, blah, 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 everybody knows. And so finally, after all these years, oh my God, it took, we had four summers, four or five summers of testing it, and then we were denied, completely denied. And then our new harbor master and our former harbor master together were able to continue the pressure. And I'm so glad to report that we now have been approved at the top of the bay to be able to anchor up there. But unfortunately, it's just first summer. We were hoping to increase that next year. But what it does is it eases the tension at the other transient mooring field, which is right smack dab in the middle of the bay, where everybody's going every which way. So it, the congestion will be eased immensely by spreading this over more water. So that's it. I'm sure it's a good thing, but government works slowly, but we got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Muldoon. Councilmember Brenner?
Yes, I had a couple of slides to show. Let's see if we can get those up. I had out-of-town guests last week. And of course, no, this is the last one we're going to show. I'll, I'll start with this. There, okay, this is better. Out-of-town guests last week, and of course, we took them to Balboa Island. And as I was there, I couldn't keep from taking photographs of what we saw, because I was so appalled that this is the state of our city. And as far as our outside dining, I don't know if we have any requirements about clearing the tables. But as we walked down the street, the table was filled. And as we walked back up the street several, maybe an hour later, it still was uncleared. And there were birds around there. So I just wanted to put these up so that we could support Councilwoman Dixon's A1 item that's coming up. And as far as activities, Diane and I attended the last meeting of the Newport Beach Restaurant Association bid. Will and I had our quarterly meeting with the Newport Mesa Unified School District, including Board President Karen Yelsey and trustee Michelle Barto, as well as Superintendent Russell and staff. Superintendent Russell is retiring in August, and the board is just about to sign a contract for an interim superintendent while they are doing a nationwide search for a permanent superintendent whom they hope to have in place by mid-September. They told us that they had had the position open for a week, and they had 1,500 applicants so far. So hopefully, they'll come up with the perfect superintendent for our district. Sean Levin of our Recreation Department and I met with a small group of parents who were interested in tweaking the playground equipment at Gradhald Park. They have a few problems with that, including their, Sean was ready to accept the suggestion that they put a bridge from one piece of the equipment over to the other, because apparently, kids are not able to navigate the climbing structure that they have there. So parents were happy about that. And Sean's looking at doing a survey, going out to the parents for other ideas about how they feel about what's there and what could possibly be improved. Will, Noah, and I attended a Zoom meeting of the CDM Residents Association. And these meetings are a great opportunity to ask questions of three council members who always attend, and other assorted staff and commission members who attend those meetings. We saw plans for the revision of the 76 station at Avocado and PCH. And I'm happy to report that the owner has decided not to go forward with creating a 7-Eleven in that location. There was a great deal of opposition in the community, and he was very responsive to that and decided to do CDM market there instead of, instead of a 7-Eleven. So we appreciate that. I attended a trustee meeting of the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control, and I've submitted my report to Leilani to include in our minutes. And today, I had a long meeting with the Good Neighbors Group regarding Option B on the housing element. And then that final slide is just to show that every so often, we get compliments from our citizens. And this came from Ron Yo, and he wanted to especially thank our Public Works Department for the continuous efforts that they make to keep our trash cans emptied on Ocean Boulevard. And we know it's like a never-ending battle, but it's nice to know that the citizens appreciate it and are noticing the, the good condition of Ocean Boulevard. So thank you.
Thank you. I had kind of a fun stretch. I attended the opening, the opening of the season at Lido Isle Yacht Club, which was a lot of fun. And I saw a lot of people I've known for a long time. I used to live on the island. Parents had a place on Wazir's, and it was just fun catching up. And then, along with Councilmember O'Neil and Ms. Brenner, the Oasis Sailing Club opening day. And that was just wonderful and fantastic, just another fantastic piece of the Oasis organization that brings so much joy for our seniors and all the services that are so important to them. And then, along with Councilmember O'Neil, I was at the Newport Harbor High School Mentor, mentee lunch, sort of celebrating the end of our year with our mentees and, and the kids and the mentors from, you know, entire year, which there are hundreds of them. And then today, what a highlight to be there with Councilmember O'Neil for the kickoff of the Junior Life Guard program, and seeing 600 kids just so excited, they could barely, they couldn't stay in one place. It was really something. And all those things are just, I mean, just all a part of, just a great community. It's what makes our, our community fantastic. No other city has any of these things that I know of. It's really something. And it's all, you know, volunteers. Volunteers are doing all of it, pretty much. So I just feel great about that. So, thank you.
All right. We'll move on to matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. So this is a, kind of a straw poll, just to see if council wants to bring it back and consider it. And so Councilmember Dixon has asked us to consider creating a voluntary partnership with businesses, residents, and visitors to work together to improve the cleanliness of public areas in Newport Beach. And this is not a committee or a, this is-
A program, just to-
Just a program.
Together, together to help come up with creative ideas to keep our community-
Great. So do we have a show of hands to support that?
Councilmembers Blom, Duffield, Dixon, Brenner, and Mayor Protem Muldoon, and Mayor Avery.
Thank you. And Councilmember Brenner has asked the council to consider discussion on how to assist the homeless population who do not want assistance. Ms. Brenner, could you just speak just briefly about what this is?
Well, it's, it's my understanding that we have, with our shelter, been able to house most of the people who actually want help. But now, we still have homeless in our community that are refusing assistance. And so I've asked Grace to look at some, fill us in on what we can do, what we can't do, and maybe talk about some ideas that we need to consider, including working with the Orange County Middle Health Group, so that we can really get these people the assistance that they need.
Thank you. So a show of hands to bring this back?
That would be Mayor Avery and councilmembers Blom, Duffield, Dixon, O'Neil, and Brenner.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 13. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent, consent calendar for separate action. Also, I need to recuse myself on item seven if the item is pulled due to real property interests.
Thank you. Councilmember Brenner, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or complex to announce related to items 1 through 13?
No, I do not.
Councilmember O'Neil?
I'd like to pull seven.
Councilmember Dixon?
Nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Blom?
I'd like to pull 12.
Councilmember Duffield? Mayor Protem Muldoon?
I have none.
And I have none. Mayor Protem, do we have a motion?
Yes. I'd like to move, excuse me, I'd like to move the balance of consent calendar, items 1 through 13, with amendment to amendments, to the minutes, with item seven pulled by Councilman O'Neil, and item 12 pulled by Councilman Blom.
Okay. Any additional council comments? All right. Good?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right. Let's vote.
Is there a second?
Do we have a second?
And we also need public comments.
Second.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Would the public like to speak in any of this? Any, any consent calendar? All right. Seeing none?
Prior to reading, announcing the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for item three, ordinance number 2021-13, and ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, amending Exhibit A to Newport Beach Municipal Code, Section 3.36.030, related to cost recovery. And item four, ordinance number 2021-14, and ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, repealing ordinance number 9724, 9815, and 9918, and disestablishing the Coronet Omar Business Improvement District. Did they not show up on the board, the voting? Oh, thank you. Councilmembers, Councilmember Duffield, thank you. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay. So it looks like we had items seven and 12 pulled. And we'll start with item seven.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the only reason I pulled this was, this contract is enormous, at $283,000. Last meeting, we were talking about our $309 million budget and spent a half hour talking about steam cleaning, which was less than this. And so I was, when we're looking at this, I remember we were, we were talking about the, I remember we were talking about the, the issue of splitting it and expanding the boardwalk and working through a bunch of different things. I don't see a situation where the California Coastal Commission allows us to substantially expand or split without it going all the way down to the wedge or all the way down into the west Newport. And I, I thought that we sort of agreed that that's not a great idea. So I'm just, I think $283,000 is an awful lot of money for a thinking process that doesn't even get us to the point of actually the, the actual engineering that would get us, and then all of the time and effort that goes to the Coastal Commission in addition. So if this were going to pass, I, I would suggest that the not-to-exceed number be brought down significantly. But I couldn't support a $283,000. That's, that's an enormous amount of money for a project that I, I think that there might be components to this that could work. But anyway, I just, that's, that's an enormous amount of money for this. Thanks.
Ms. Dixon?
Mr. O'Neil makes a, a good point. In the, in the staff report, where's Mr. Webb? You mentioned there are a great number of community engagement meetings and back and forth, which I think conceptually is laudable. We always want to involve our community. I just wonder if we can shave off some of the costs to have fewer. I mean, we probably only need one meeting with the community to get their interest. And a lot of the businesses are very concerned about the parking lots, parking lot, and just McFadden Square, and both parking lots. And so that's, and then the condition of the pier, and all this is what's driving this conceptual look at. But I don't know if we need as much community. I want community, but there are like three different back and forths with the communities. See any way we can slim that down?
Yes, thank you, council members. I believe we can. I looked at the proposal with Brad Summers, who is running the project. There are at least three or four community meetings. Just given the nature of this project, as you know, there's been so much discussion, we figured we're going to have a lot of talk. If the council should choose us to streamline that, we had up to three options to be developed in there. We could easily get that down to two or one, if so desired, and then maybe bring it back to council for further public debate, if you wanted to. I don't know if this is a PBNR issue. It typically would be a PBNR issue. There's money in there for that discussion. But if you want us to try to streamline that, we could surely shave some money out of this.
And also, just to emphasize that the boardwalk, as we've been wrestling with this for years, is really designed from 15th Street to 36th Street, just to be clear.
At this point, we just looked at that segment. It's the most congested, busy.
Yes.
There have been questions about going down to the next pier. That would be another discussion. It might be too big. To Councilmember O'Neil's question, I don't, I expect the Coast Commission might bring those up. They brought them up before. But we showed several examples where they've allowed it in many other cities now. So it's more about, let's work with something, and then we'll deal with that later, hopefully.
And that's the congested areas that I've identified.
From 36th, when it comes up seashore, down to 15th is probably-
Bottleneck.
Marine Park area is probably the busiest.
Is there any way so we can move forward on this, that you could, you could commit to just reducing the cost by a third, perhaps?
We could do a verbal commitment. We'd have a contractual agreement that has the fees, and we'd have to go back and renegotiate the agreement and bring it back. But if you would trust us on that, we'd work the consultant and start bringing that down. And again, I'll try to work with staff to bring it back to council for more discussion versus as many community meetings. Or maybe through council's direction, you're going to obviously be involved in that, Councilmember Dixon, to make it clear to the folks that we have to keep limited scope and function. We just can't keep going back and reiterate and reiterate and go after proposals.
Right. And just like we did with the fire station. I mean, we had, use my town halls as, as most of the community engagement on that.
I'm sure we could. If we kept it even to two options, I think Brad told me, one of the options, to take one out, probably about $80,000, just to, just remove it.
Yeah.
So if we just get it, you only have two concepts we can work around, and then we'll take the final.
But what's the larger cost, what's the big cost item?
The, well, there's a lot of public outreach in here, working with the community and the residents, particularly on the plazas and the parking lots. That's where a lot of work's going to have to be done. I don't expect the, the splitting of the trails or the widening is the biggest topic. It's really about which way do you want to go? And we have several, several examples of that. We split the trails. It's probably more about just what we're going to do in the median. But the, the parking lots, the pier plaza itself is a very detailed, heavily-traveled business place, and I could see some discussion on that.
So what can we say that we, how would we do that, Mr. Harper? Do we revise, get a-
Well, the council could approve a different not-to-exceed amount, and then authorize city staff, you know, subject to approval by our office, to reduce the scope to match that not-to-exceed, or less.
If you want to take a stab in, you know, $210,000, shave 70 off, and we'll work with that, and we'll start going back to the consultant to work around that.
I know we've, you and I've talked about this. The parking lots are a big issue. There's ways to reconfigure the parking lots structurally to benefit the businesses, in particular, especially if we're going to be allowing, considering the outdoor dining situation, we really have to reconfigure the parking lots, too. So it's all tied in. I could go with, and if my colleagues would support that, slicing it off a little bit to 210, which just seems for conceptual, it would be drawings, we'd get-
This would be concepts. Again, in all fairness, this is the first step of large projects. So you're going to develop the public outreach, the concepts, all the way up to coming to you again and bringing it for public hearing and approval. And from there, if you did show, approve it, then we'd have to go ahead and do the design and the permitting. That'd be the next step.
Well, I would support reducing some of that public engagement. I want the public engagement, but we'll find other avenues, either here or in town halls, to accomplish that. So-
And I'll work my stuff. If 210 works for you, we'll, we'll go back and see if we can make that work.
I could support that.
Okay. Do we have any other council comment?
Is that going to work, Brad? Not too tight? Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner, are you touching your screen?
I'm thinking about it. I guess I am. I just think that, you know, we've heard so much from the public about the problems down there, that to do nothing is really not an option. And, and I think the liability issue is one of my biggest concerns down there. Hearing about, you know, people, I mean, there are accidents that have happened on these boardwalks where people have been killed. And so I think we have to do something. I was just wondering if maybe a survey such as the, we did a mail-out, no, we mailed out a card in Coronet Omar to my district, asking people to go online and complete a survey. And it was pretty successful. We got a, a good response from that. So I'm wondering if between Councilwoman Dixon's town halls and a survey, we might really get, and ask direct questions, like, you know, this or this kind of thing. So that's just a possibility, because I do feel like we have to do something, but this is a lot of money.
I will say that Councilmembers Dixon's town halls are pretty successful in focusing in. If we, if we really focus on that project, I'm willing to have staff do a lot of that work, the consultant, listening, he doesn't have to lead the conversation. And direct questions are great. Split or widen, you know, this or that. Parking lot like this or like that, you know, and kind of narrow the box will usually save some discussion. It's, it's been a long discussion, but we did get to that point where we said, either go with widening or splitting the trails, or stop talking about this, because we've done way too many years of this. So, and they agreed, we need to do something. Let's, let's do something. So.
Thank you. All right. Any other council comments on this? Any members of the public wish to speak to this item number seven? All right. Seeing none, do we-
Motion? I'll make a motion to support the reduced not-to-exceed, not-to-exceed fee of 210 for the conceptual phase of this project.
And just to clarify, so that'd be staff recommendation with a not-to-exceed price of $210,000 and a revised scope that make sure it doesn't exceed that.
Ms. Duff, do we have a second? All right. Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think 100 was- Yeah, I was going to say, I think 100 was probably where I could get to, but it doesn't sound like that's realistic from, from Mr. Webb, so. I want to point, I, I understand. I just, I can't get there on the cost side. Thanks.
All right. Any other public comment? Any other comments? Dixon, do you want to?
No, I've seen a link to it.
All right, okay. So let's, let's vote.
With Mayor Proton Muldoon, Councilmembers Blom, Duffield, and O'Neal voting no, the motion fails three, four.
All right. Move on to item?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question on that? So I do agree that there needs to be some work done, just to be clear. In particular, at the McFadden Square area, with the parking lot and with the, with the boardwalk in that area and the pier. Is it possible to rebid this on a reduced scope that would allow for us to get to the point where we can bring this back and, and have a majority support on that, on that front? Because this strikes me that, I think my guess is that this failed because it was too much money. Can we get to a point where we bring this back, where that's, that's a focus, and we, you know, we get to a point where we're, we can get a, a lower scoped bid?
We can sure work at that. I think there's something there. Again, if, if we get pretty good direction, where you want to just focus on McFadden Plaza, and maybe we can get it very limited, yes. And maybe we could also use the council's wisdom to come back with skipping PBNR and a lot of the commissions, and get some general concepts for you to look at with the community and get some direction. That might help.
I think that would be helpful, and I do think that that would be appropriate. So I want to make sure that this doesn't just straight die, and it's, you get the direction that don't do anything on this.
And we just come, this is a professional service, so it's quality, quality based versus bid. So we go work with the consultant, see what we can come up with, and bring it back.
Thanks, Dave.
So this would be none, none of the boardwalk, just the part, there's that area there?
McFadden Square is, is one area that needs it.
Right.
Let me, let me talk to them, because maybe if there's some simple concept that can go through the parking lot. One of the big needs, as you know, is the conflicts with the bikes in the parking lot. The trail can be split, actually, if I had enough staff, we could do it ourselves. It's just, it's, it's, that's the easier one, but it's, it's time. The, the work is in the parking lots of McFadden Square, working with the community, the businesses. What do you want to do here? That's your front door. Everybody comes down to Newport, they take a picture of the pier. We want to be really cautious and make that very nice. But let me, let me see what you can do, and we'll bring it back.
I would support that. I appreciate that. It's too important. This is, this is a 40-year-old proj, it hasn't been touched in 40 years. And it's in need, just as Councilmember Brenner said, it's, it's in need of, of improving. And we can narrow the scope. I honestly think that we don't, in my opinion, it's not like a general plan, community engagement. I think there's a finite group of people that care very strongly about improving for their own business benefit, the improvements of their businesses, the sidewalks, the parking. And as I said earlier, because of the sidewalk dining, it's, it's becoming a problem. I mean, they just want more better design and get people in and out in the parking lots and that kind of thing. So it's a functional issue. I, I don't know if we need, this firm that is doing this is really creating the public engagement. Do we need more of an architectural firm to really come back with some actual plans that the community can react to?
Maybe we re-scope it, because this firm does a lot of that, and there was data collection in this proposal on how much movement, things like, maybe we start with like a landscape architect, high level, and get the design element kind of figured out. The, the nuts and bolts, the geometry can be done later. But if you can kind of get something you can agree upon, how the, how the traffic flows. So let us look at that and see if we can re-scope.
I think that's a good approach.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Thanks.
Okay. So now we'll move on to item number 12, pulled by Councilmember Blom. Councilmember Blom, do you have a conflict regarding any of the matters under this item?
I do. I have a conflict regarding the Babo Island items on this.
Thank you. So Mr. Blom recues himself and leave the room while we discuss matters on Babo Island and the Newport Beach Wine and Food Event. And then he will return to discuss the other items under item 12. So do any council members wish to discuss the matters on Babo Island or the Newport Beach Wine and Food Event? Seeing none, do we have any public comment on those two items? This is on item 12. And seeing none. Bring this back. Okay, we can have Councilmember Blom return. Mr. Blom, would you like a staff report?
Do we have a staff report?
Probably do.
I don't, I don't think we do. So no, we're just going to run right into this.
Okay.
And this one does follow off of the last item, when we started talking about cost and the costs associated and what really strikes us. You know, and for me, as we sit on the finance committee and we really weigh what's important in the city, what we're constantly pushing forth, and how we are crunching those numbers to make sure that our city stays as beautiful as it does, and we sit up here and debate what we can do to improve the boardwalk and McFadden Square, when I look at some of these and I see huge dollar amounts connected to them, I really have to start asking that question. Are we sharpening our pencils? Are we just asking for the city for a handout? And in that, I feel like coming into this year, this is the time where we have to be more creative than less creative. This isn't just business as usual, that we do the same program for the same amount every year. I think sometimes it's important for those organizations that help promote the city to realize that a promotion of the city is being fiscally responsible first, and promoting it with the marketing that helps drive people here, second. And being in business and constantly pushing, marketing is part of what we do, we always say that the most important thing in business is service first, not getting people here. And so it strikes me, as we sit up here and we do shut down policies that are going to make the city more beautiful, that we're looking at some of these, and I look at, to start out, Newport Beach Film Festival, and I think it is helpful for the city, but I look at that as a, a private enterprise, something that does get a lot of charitable donations from, whether it's restaurants or other landowners doing it. But it's $150,000 the city is giving to make that happen. And to me, that $150,000 is a huge amount of money, especially when we sit there and, and whittle down each cost the city has, each time we have to repave a road, each time we have to tell Dave and our Public Works team, no, they can't do that, that we're turning around and we're giving up a huge amount of money, and do we see the return on these? And it's not that I don't want to do these festivals, I do. I want to see them come through. I just don't want the city to be the main sponsor of them. I want private enterprise to. Up here on the dais, we have things that benefit the city as a whole. And I'm not saying that people coming here, that this doesn't benefit the city. But we look at the businesses and residents here first. We see how we can promote that. We look at the cleanliness and the financial strength of our city. We see how we can promote that. And these are the cherry on top of a perfect fiscal year. That's not what we have right now. We have a recovery where we've been flat for three years now. We aren't adding those extra dollars and cents, but the costs are building. There's CPI that keeps going up. Inflation is moving. We're negotiating with many of our labor departments, and it means that we have a lot on the backend we're dealing with. And so when I look at these numbers, I can't approve things like this. If someone's not going to come back to us and say, hey, here's what we're willing to do. We're willing to take this amount off. We're willing to show you what we're spending this money on. And the city is willing to get rid of our, some of our fees, use some of our sites as it comes through this. And so the other question I had was, the resources that were allocated last year, did those all come back to the city for things like the film festival? I saw that the Spirit Run or the 5K did, but the Boat Parade, did those funding cycles come back in? Or once we approved those grants last year, or do we not approve those grants, Grace?
Well, we approve them, they come annually to the city. But I will note that for the Film Festival and for the Boat Parade, there are agreements, which we are in the last year of, so both a three and a four-year agreement, respectively, on those. And this is the last year.
So is that price fixed into this agreement?
Into the agreement, yes.
Okay. So I, I have to use this then as a cautionary tale for all of us, that when we make these long-term agreements in the marketing world, that we don't know what's going to happen to us in the future. And I would love to say that we love marketing our city. It's amazing and beautiful. And being a recipient, or a reciprocant of tourism coming into the city, being in the business world, all of these things actually benefit me personally in that type of ideal. And the reason I'm talking against them is because I still have to look at a P and L every year the same way the city does. And when I have to start slashing things off of our P and L, these are the costs that I have to slash first. It's not police and fire. It's not our emergency services. It's not cleaning up our boardwalks. It's not public safety. It's not our parks, our children. And I have to ask, are these the things that are constantly helping us in that way? I just want to see sharper pencils. And that's the only thing I'm putting, I pulled this for, is I want to see us constantly looking at these marketing as something that helps us. But if we're in the business of helping us, then help us make good fiscal sense of what we're trying to do here. That's all I have.
Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you. Grace, to follow on that, that question. So last year, the Film Festival didn't occur because of the pandemic, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And the Boat Parade happened informally. Last year, did the Newport Beach Christmas Boat Parade and Newport Beach Film Festival get $50,000 and $150,000?
The Boat Parade, the final dollar amount, because they had some costs that had already occurred, because the, you know, the cancellation happened quite late. Sean, do you have the exact dollar amount on that one?
The Film Festival actually did a virtual event last year. So they did, they did a run. And, and so what we did with the, with these two particular events is they had to show the fees that they did incur. And even if the event didn't occur, they spent a lot of money getting ready for them. So that's how we justified going ahead and paying.
Yeah. What's the dollar amount you gave to each, Sean?
They received the full amount.
They both received, so 50 and 150?
I believe so.
Wow.
I want to say on the Boat Parade, though, there was, it was less than the 50. Steve, do you have the exact number? If that's okay?
Yeah, yeah. That's why I'm asking. Thank you.
So the, the Boat Parade did receive the $50,000 grant, I think in the August to September timeframe, the check was cut to the city. We did proceed in having significant expenditures for marketing. We actually even printed the program, which appeared in locale magazine, was distributed. By the time we canceled the Boat Parade around the beginning of December or the end of November, we had incurred, I think approximately $27,000 or $28,000 in costs. And we actually sent a check back to the city. Don't, unfortunately, I didn't bring the amount with me, but it was in roughly half of the money went back to the city. The chamber itself made zero on the event. We kept nothing. So, and we only really had 3,000 in hard costs ourself. The other 25,000 or so was with our marketing partner, Newport Beach Company. But again, the bulk of that was printing the program, other marketing efforts that were made. So yes, we returned whatever we didn't spend.
Okay. So, so we have that money back.
Yes.
So could we find the amount? Because I want to make a motion to have that amount be given to the group that did the parade. I understand it was a junior version, it wasn't the same level as, as, as the chamber would do it, but I would like, there's a group of businesses that took upon themselves to fund a Christmas Boat Parade. They worked really hard, they did a, a shorter version, provided economic stimulus. I don't see why any group would be entitled to that funds, other than whoever, whoever did the group. And if we quickly find out, if it's like 23,000 or so, I think that they, that should go to reimburse the expenses of those, of those groups that banded together to give us the shorter version during the pandemic.
So would they provide us what they had spent, and then we would reimburse them?
Yes, and, and from what I understand, it greatly exceeds that number, which is fine. I'm not looking to make them entirely whole, but I think that would be nice.
So if we get a council, you know?
Yeah, if I get a second on it, I'll make that motion after public comments. You can find that number amount for me really quickly, Sean, possibly, what was returned to us.
Was that a 501(c)(3) did they organize?
Um, I don't know. I think, I think Steve Shaken said, no, Steve hates competition. I'm sure we could find out, and I'm sure they have something.
I think that'd be good.
And if they don't, then, you know, it was for nothing.
I was second there.
Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Duffield?
Well, I don't know if this is the, bringing up this, we're going to talk about each and every one of these things. I, we don't have the time, I understand. But I, this Ensenada race sticks out pretty hard for me. And so do we want to talk about that now, or just, I guess, sorry? But being a racer all my life, the Ensenada race has changed significantly, and Mexico has changed significantly. And so the race itself does not command at all, even close to what it used to. I think at one point, there were 750 boats at a start line, and it's now down to about 40. And so, and half of those, well, two-thirds of them just go around the buoy and go straight to San Diego, or they don't go to Ensenada. And I don't mean to be the bearer of bad news, because I, I still want to do the race, the race is the race. But for us, as a city, it doesn't have the same glamour, the same attendance. And so I think that we have to discover whether, what we're going to do with that. And maybe there's a race somewhere else. Maybe there's a, a Hoag Hospital race around Catalina or something. But we're not getting much out of that 10,000, in my opinion. Thank you.
Ms. Dixon?
I just wanted to follow up with Grace. Could you clarify, is this some of these under community and charitable? Is any of that fee waivers or actual cash donation?
Two different categories. The community and charitable is waiver of fees, and the, the special events down below, those events get, get cash.
Okay. So it's, we're just talking about fees and those are city services and permit?
Right. So you've got the two categories. So the, the Newport to Ensenada, that is, that is a, a cut, a check of $10,000 of what has been done and what is proposed. And that's in the signature events. In the community and charitable, that's a waiver of fees. So that's just city fees that are incurred that they do not have to pay. And if they incur more fees than that, then the event has to pay those fees.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Seeing no more council comments out to the public on this, any members of the public want to speak to this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Greg Schwank. I'm the CEO and co-founder of the Newport Beach Film Festival and the parlayance of the movie business. I, I'm much more comfortable behind the camera than in front of, but I'll do my best to articulate a couple of key salient points. One, first and foremost, is thank you. Thank you for your support, the support of your predecessors, and the engagement and involvement of not only the city and the city staff, many council members, but our community in helping to build the Newport Beach Film Festival, not only into a signature event that I think the entire city is proud of, but into the largest entertainment event of its kind in coastal Southern California, larger and more intricate than anything in San Diego County, LA County, or Orange County. You've got to go out to Palm Springs before you start finding a festival that's anything, anything near the size and scope of the Newport Beach Film Festival. Everyone looks at our major tent pole events, everyone looks at the opening night or closing night around Alito, opening night around Fashion Island, what we do to incorporate different parts of the villages within our community, whether it's some of our spotlight events in Coronado Mar, in Newport Coast, or throughout other areas of Newport Beach. Things that I'm most proud of are the areas where we're able to incorporate and engage with our community in a very unique way. Whether it's the work that we do with the different communities, the, the very special things that we have with the diversity and inclusion, as far as 50 different countries engaged and involved in the Newport Beach Film Festival. Film Festival. It's 50 different cultures and 50 different unique perspectives that really make not only our festival, but our community and our state very unique and special. From the standpoint of the things, I think, that maybe only a certain part of our community gets to engage with, the thing I'm probably most proud of is what we do not only for our colleges and getting a lot of our young people involved, but also for our youth. Whether it's Principal Bolton, who I've worked with over at Newport Harbor, and his counterparts at Corona Del Mar and Sage and other high schools throughout our community. It's through our youth division that we give a voice to young people and allow them to participate with the Newport Beach Film Festival and see their work on the big screen. Then they get to also engage with some of our collegiate programs where they get to look at schools throughout Southern California and see what may be a great path for them to continue working and engaging with the film industry. You know, last but not least, is the idea of shining a spotlight on our city. And I encourage all of you to come out October 21st to the 28th for the 22nd Annual Newport Beach Film Festival, when we'll be engaging with, you know, a multitude of restaurants, filling our hotels, and invigorating our retail throughout the city with, you know, the, hopefully, close to the 55,000 plus people we've had in the past. Again, I thank all of you for your support. And I thank again all your predecessors for their, and I hopefully will see continued support. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. All right.
Good evening, Mayor Avery and fellow council members. I'm Steve Rozansky, President and CEO of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to thank you for including our two requests on the agenda tonight. The first was up in the community and charitable events category of the, what will be the 59th Annual Corona Del Mar Sandcastle Contest. We're thick in planning that. To Councilmember Blom's point, we do have significant contribution from local businesses, including Wells Fargo Bank, City of Hope, and First Republic Bank. So we do look at it as a business, community partnership. Literally thousands of people will come and visit that. We get publicity in the newspaper, as well as TV stations. So I think it does lend to the marketing aspect of, you know, the brand of Newport Beach and marketing the city and bringing visitors to our community to spend money, visit Councilmember Blom's restaurants, as well as all the other ones in town that benefit by it. The second event, obviously, the, what will be the 113th Annual Christmas Boat Parade and Ring of Lights. It's actually two events. It's the Boat Parade and the judging of the homes around the bay. You know, we're looking forward to it. We got an early start on it this year because of our need to cancel the event last year. I understand that there was a resident event. I'm actually, you know, a little bit sorry that it happened, only because I don't think it was in the public interest to have that event. But, you know, we felt it was an abundance of caution to cancel the event, even though we, you know, did have some expenditures. But we are looking forward, we're looking prospective, not retrospective, to a great event this year. We just finished up a theme contest. We had over 100 submissions, narrowed it down to three. And I think that we're making news tonight. The theme of this year's parade will be Jingle on the Waves. So boaters out there can start thinking up their decorations for their boats to, you know, decorate around that theme. Again, to Councilmember Blom's point, you know, we had a survey or a study done, Newport Beach Company commissioned it, that showed that the five nights of the parade generated about six and a half to seven million dollars of revenue in the city just associated with the parade. And so that could be anything from, you know, the Balboa Bay Resort, which has one of its biggest five nights of the, of the year there, restaurants all around town. I'm sure Councilmember Blom's restaurant in Lido Marina Village will see some additional people, you know, going to his restaurant as they view the parade from the shore there. You know, that could be catering that happens. That could be the gas station that's going to build the mini mart in Corona Del Mar. We'll see increase in business as, you know, literally hundreds of thousands of people will watch that parade over the five nights, not to mention all the people that will watch on the TV stations. Frequently, it's picked up around the country. I remember getting a call once from my predecessor, Councilwoman Janet Bay. She lives in Tahuas, New Mexico, when, and she emailed me and said, wow, it's so great to see the Boat Parade on the new, evening news tonight in Tahuas, New Mexico. So, you know, again, it's, it's a longstanding event. It, I think it casts the city in a great light. I thank you for supporting it. And we look forward to staging the event December 15th to December 19th this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mayor Avery, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First, I would like to say I generally agree with Councilman Blom's assessment of the situation. And I hope fresh consideration will be given to those large multi-year contracts when, when they come to their, end of their term. Second, I may not have totally understood the Mayor Protem's potential proposal to redirect money that was not spent in the last year to a group that may have spent money. I would like to caution the council, I think it's not generally good policy to be compensating people retroactively for services that were not requested. And number two, if you did do that, I would hope it would be limited to actual expenses for which there are receipts to prove that money was spent, and not simply a gift of public funds to people that we like. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? All right. Any further council comment?
I'd like to say, yes, Mr. Mosher, the event did occur. I was there. Many people were there. I'm so glad they did it and had the courage to do it. There's so many people who are struggling to make ends meet, especially in the service industry. Newport Beach, we're so blessed, but many people come here to work, are having trouble, are concerned about feeding their families. It was a real group. A lot of money was spent by this group. And they really did out of the goodness of their heart and because of they cared so much about their employees. When one party can't perform a contract for whatever reason, it's quite, it's quite common to, that someone else can, can assist in some way they could not perform. And, and, and that's sort of the, my, my line of thinking in this. So I'd like to move the staff item with the remainder, return it from, sorry, refunded for the Newport Beach Christmas Boat Parade from the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce to be distributed among the group that spearheaded the, I guess you could say, smaller version of the Christmas Boat Parade during the pandemic. Thank you.
And that's with, with providing receipts, correct?
Yeah, I'm sure they can provide some expenses for costs. Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
I'll second. I just need to ask a quick question, clarifying question. Was there only one group? And if there is only, if there's going to be multiple businesses submitting receipts and it exceeds the, the amount, how do we prioritize?
I'm, I'm aware of only one, Councilman O'Neil, but from the commerce side that did it, that spent a lot of money in marketing and organizing. I, if anyone else or if another group's come forward, I think we could, you know, maybe address in a subcommittee if you want to do something like that. But I'm only aware of one. And, and from my understanding, they had hard costs. And it's, it's a basically, it's a group of people who often participate in the, in the annual one with the commerce. This time, they just did it on their own. So I'm sorry, I don't know the specific answer.
Oh, no. That's okay. I'm just trying to figure out if, if we have multiple people make a request on this, on these funds. I'm just trying to figure out how the priority works. I don't know.
And it would be helpful from the staff side to know who we should be working directly with then, to make the payment to.
We could always bring the item back, just put on the consent calendar for approval. That way.
That would work for me.
Okay.
Okay. I'll second then with that, with that understanding.
All right, Ms. Dixon?
And just to clarify, what would be the source of funds? Is the unused from last year's Christmas parade that was refunded by the Chamber?
Yeah, the Chamber refunded. It's in the range of about 22,000, in that range, that we have received back into the general fund.
Okay. All right. That's fine. Thank you.
All right. There's no further comment. We've motioned and we have a second, right? So let's vote. Yes, it's.
Yeah. So just for clarification, you're voting for staff's recommendation with the one amendment is, is basically the returned funds from last year's Boat Parade. That will come back to the council for approval as a separate item on consent calendar. And we'll work with that group.
I'm confused by that, Aaron. So we're voting for the motion to approve all of the grants with the exception of bringing?
With an addition. And the addition is basically the money that was returned from the Boat Parade last year will be taken and compensate the group that actually put on the Boat Parade. But just to make sure that we're, we're giving it to the right group and that the dollar amounts are supported by invoices, we're going to bring it back to the council at a future meeting just for approval and put on a consent counter. Is that clear?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
The motion carries unanimously. Who did we miss? Mayor Avery, is it thumbs up?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. Now's the time for public comments on non-attend items.
Mayor Avery, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. And I wanted to take a minute to speak on behalf of the people who are unable to speak on their own tonight, which is to say the people who for more than a year had an opportunity to participate remotely in your meetings. That, although I never myself tried doing that, I think it was helpful for people to be able to comment to you from wherever they were. That option mysteriously disappeared on tonight's agenda. I don't know if the change is going to be permanent or not. But I do think it should be the city council, not the staff, that determines the format of your meetings. And I am concerned that I have not heard you discuss whether you want to continue with remote comment capability or not. And I think you should discuss that before you abandon that possibility. I think it was useful to have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Avery.
Hello, Mayor Avery. Love the last name. Hello, everyone. My name's Avery Counts. I'm the constituent services manager for Orange County's second district supervisor, Katrina Foley. And I serve the beautiful city of Newport Beach. I would like to congratulate Newport Beach on your vaccination rates, especially the 92657 ZIP code with nearly 71% of residents fully vaccinated. Congratulations to councilmembers O'Neil and Brenner, as, as far as I know from the internet, that ZIP code includes both of your districts. So congratulations. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief update on the work Supervisor Foley is doing. The County Board of Supervisors recently voted and adopted a new budget for the 2021-22 budget cycle. Few highlights are the John Wayne Airport Fly Quiet Program, which will produce its general aviation pilot quiet departure brochures, videos, and posters to remind the pilots about the fly quiet procedures. The county has also put together a veterans workforce development program, where if an employer hired, employer hires a veteran who is seeking work, the county will give that employer grants to help pay a portion of the wages owed to the veteran. So any business members looking to hire new employees, please contact our office. Our office will soon begin accepting grants for a District 2 arts grants program that will provide eligible arts-related small businesses and nonprofits a one-time grant. I'll be happy to forward that information to the city once it becomes available. I'd also like to update the group on our office's COVID-19 efforts. We focused on vaccinating our community since Supervisor Foley swearing in on March 26th. We're proud to report that as of today, almost 2 million residents have received at least one vaccine dose in District 2. Supervisor Foley and our team would also like to invite all Newport Beach residents to join our upcoming events, the June 23rd, and the astute will notice that is tomorrow, at 10:00 a.m., Job Fair. Employers and job seekers alike are invited to join our Job Fair. On the 15th of July at 6:00 p.m., we're going to host a town hall to commemorate the first 100 days in office and give an update on everything we've accomplished. On August 12th at 6:00 p.m., we're planning a community workshop on the county's redistricting process at Orange Coast College with live stream options available. And lastly, please stay tuned for our restaurant music tour in cities across the second district. Thank you again for your time, Mayor and Council. And please feel free to contact our office if there's anything we can do to be of assistance. You can email me directly at Avery, like the paper company, and like the mayor's last name, A V E R Y dot Counts, like counting numbers, C O U N T S, at OCGOV.com, or give me a call on my cell at 714-559-8364. Have a great night, Newport.
All right. We're moving on to current business. Oh, sorry, Sandra. Didn't see you get up there.
That's very difficult to follow. All that enthusiasm and that voice and that deep voice. Good evening, council members. I decided to come down this evening after reviewing the agenda for this meeting. I saw there were items being requested by council members for future agenda items. I wanted to express my disappointment that a future study of Mariners Mile and West Coast Highway Development is not one of those items. Now is the time for this planning. Two major developments are now in review at the Building Department. These both will have major impacts on the safety and traffic in our neighborhood. Additionally, the circulation element of our general plan is currently being developed. We all know the county arterial highway plan funds are reliant on the master plan. But what is important for the council and the citizens to know is that there are options within the plan. What are they? How can they fit into our vision for Mariners Mile and along West Coast Highway? The city council and citizens need information and to give input on future development and design of this distinctive and historic village. We need an overview by staff so council members can make decisions with the full picture. Let's do this work now instead of having conflict with each step. Instead of piecemealing, let's create an enduring, thriving vision for the future. It was done for Corona Del Mar. We can do it for Mariners Mile. I'm asking you to be brave and step into it. We got to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? All right. We'll move into current business. Item number 14 is the annual appointments to boards and commissions. Madam Clerk?
This is the, as mentioned, this is the annual appointment. In order to be appointed, the applicants must receive at least four votes, and it's appropriate to take public comments at this time.
So do we have any comments, public comments on this item? All right. Seeing none, any council comment? Go with the vote tally.
Okay, I will start with the Board of Library Trustees. Councilmember Dixon voted for Doug Coulter. Councilmember Blom, Doug Coulter. Councilmember Duffield, Doug Coulter. Councilmember O'Neil, Doug Coulter. Councilmember Brenner, Doug Coulter. Mayor Protem Muldoon, Doug Coulter. And Mayor Avery, Doug Coulter. There is one vacancy, so that was 7-0. For Building and Fire, Board of Appeals, there are two vacancies and only two applicants. Let me just review these real quick. It was unanimous to appoint Charles Allen and Kenneth Bondi, 7-0, 7-0. For the City Arts Commission, there are three vacancies. So each council member got to vote for three. Councilmember Dixon voted for Gregory Cox, Maureen Flanagan, and Barbara George. Councilmember Blom voted for Maureen Flanagan, Megan McNulty, and Laurel Tippett. Councilmember Duffield voted for Maureen Flanagan, Megan McNulty, and Laurel Tippett. Councilmember O'Neil voted for Maureen Flanagan, Barbara George, and Sarah Salin. Councilmember Brenner voted for Gregory Cox, Maureen Flanagan, and Barbara George. Mayor Protem Muldoon, Barbara George, Megan McNulty, and Laurel Tippett. And Mayor Avery, Gregory Cox, Maureen Flanagan, and Barbara George. So, Maureen Flanagan received six votes. Barbara George received five votes. And then there were three votes for Gregory Cox, Megan McNulty, and Laurel Tippett. So we'll do a second vote for those three individuals.
Sorry. Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
There's only one spot remaining. So do we only vote once?
You only vote once.
Okay.
The other two spots are already taken by Maureen Flanagan and Barbara George. You would vote once. You would vote once. So Councilmember Brenner voted for Gregory Cox. Councilmember Blom, Megan McNulty. Councilmember Duffield, Megan McNulty. Mayor Protem Muldoon, Megan McNulty. Councilmember Dixon, Laurel Tippett. Mayor Avery, Gregory Cox. Councilmember O'Neil, Megan McNulty. So Megan McNulty received four votes. Okay, for Civil Service Board, there is one vacancy. Councilmember Dixon, Paul Meyer. Councilmember Blom, Paul Meyer. Councilmember Duffield, Paul Meyer. Councilmember O'Neil, Paul Meyer. Councilmember Brenner, Paul Meyer. Mayor Protem Muldoon, Paul Meyer. And Mayor Avery, Paul Meyer. So that's unanimous for Paul Meyer. For Harbor Commission, there are two vacancies. Councilmember Dixon voted for Scott Cunningham and Steve Scully. Councilmember Blom, Scott Cunningham, Steve Scully. Councilmember Dixon, Scott Cunningham, Steve Scully. Councilmember O'Neil, Scott Cunningham, Steve Scully. Councilmember Brenner, Scott Cunningham, Steve Scully. Mayor Protem Muldoon, Scott Cunningham, Steve Scully. And Mayor Avery, also Scott Cunningham, Steve Scully. That's unanimous. For PBNR, Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission, there are two vacancies. Councilmember Dixon voted for Heather Ignatton and Sheila Valetti. Councilmember Blom, Randall Black and Heather Ignatton. Councilmember Duffield, Heather Ignatton and Kira Kirby. Councilmember O'Neil, Heather Ignatton and Kira Kirby. Councilmember Brenner, Heather Ignatton and Cynthia Sender. Mayor Protem Muldoon, Heather Ignatton and Kira Kirby. Mayor Avery, Heather Ignatton and Kira Kirby. Heather Ignatton is reappointed and Kira Kirby is appointed. For Planning Commission, there are two vacancies. Councilmember Dixon, Lauren Kleiman and Lee Lowry. Councilmember Blom, Laura Kleiman and Lee Lowry. Councilmember Duffield, Lauren Kleiman and Lee Lowry. Councilmember O'Neil, Lauren Kleiman and Lee Lowry. Councilmember Brenner, Lauren Kleiman and Debbie Stevens. Mayor Protem Muldoon, Lauren Kleiman and Lee Lowry. And Mayor Avery, Lauren Kleiman and Lee Lowry. Lauren Kleiman and Lee Lowry are reappointed.
All right, we're moving on to item 15.
Could I say one quick thing?
Sure.
I just wanted to tell Lee that I have made a promise to myself that I will vote for Debbie Stevens until she is finally on the Planning Commission. And I did the same thing to Curtis Elmore, and so I want you to know it's not personal. I just am committed to getting Debbie Stevens on the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Item 15, Resolution 2021-62, proclaiming the termination of the local emergency declared on March 15th, 2020. Ms. Leon?
I could do a quick presentation on this. Okay. And I have this actually combined a little bit with the COVID update since it kind of goes together. If that's all right, maybe really quick. And can we get the screen up?
And just for clarification, we're opening items 15 and 16 together. So both of those, as opposed to having them separate.
Okay, so just real briefly, our numbers on the county cases, as I think we all know, are continuing to look very good and very stable. So you can see the latest numbers that came out today. Everything is holding, even with the recent reopening. As you all know, June 15th was the reopen date with all the tiers eliminated and the capacity limits and social distancing requirements. So all of that is good news all around. And also, after a lot of back and forth from Cal OSHA, we got some guidelines that were really helpful for employers, including ourselves, where we could now have employees who are vaccinated through self-acquisition, not wear masks, and drop a lot of the social distancing and other requirements there. So all of that is progressing very well. And with that, all our facilities are reopened. We're returning to normal business hours. We are taking reservations on our facilities, really back to normal there. Our library branches are operating, just our one branch on Mariners, as we're getting our staffing up to speed. We'll have that one back up fully on July 6th, and with that, everything should be in full operations as we were prior to the pandemic. We have another vaccination clinic this Wednesday. We'll continue, as we have dosages, to offer them as we can and look at different mobile options, as well as the county doing the same on that. So with that, what we're looking at here tonight is, as you know, we had declared the emergency on March 15th of 2020. So what is that, over 15 months, I guess, now that we're in? And it does remain in effect until terminated by proclamation by the council. So we have the resolution before you tonight to terminate that. And if council does so, then it does repeal all the related emergency orders and ordinances. I'll note, as you all know, at the last meeting on the outdoor dining piece, that was extended while staff is further studying the outdoor dining and requirements around parking and such. All of my emergency duties and powers are extinguished with this. And then there are short-term, as you know, on short-term lodging, we had a hold on any new permits being issued there and minimum night stays on that. So all that is removed, as it's part of the emergency ordinance there. So that's what I wanted to just provide, is just the brief framework and outline, and certainly happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, I wanted to just talk a little bit about the item because I've been looking forward to getting to the point where we could even have this conversation, let alone pass it for over a year now. And we have seen, obviously, we've seen some substantial ups and we've seen some substantial downs. And we have fortunately seen such a decrease over the last couple of months that it's, honestly, it's amazing for so many reasons. But we've got a county of 3.2 million people, and we have fortunately seen, for quite some time, the ICU hospitalizations in Orange County for COVID-positive patients be in the single digits. We've seen the hospitalizations be in the right around 50 or so, where the peak back in December, early January was over 2,200 people. And so the reason a lot of the economy and the society had shut down in the beginning was to make sure that we weren't overrunning our healthcare system, to make sure that we weren't rationing healthcare and making really horrible choices during that. And look, we saw some really scary scenes, especially up in Los Angeles County in December and January. We're just not there anymore. We're not even close. And, you know, I just want to highlight the fact that there were a lot of moments last year that were incredibly scary. There were a lot of moments of extreme uncertainty. And we were trying to make decisions constantly at the diocese level in our community, talking with Hogue Hospital. And I just want to say, especially to our Hogue administrators, thank you for partnering with us. Thank you for partnering with our community. Thank you, especially at the very beginning, recognizing that this was going to affect seniors disproportionately and going into our skilled nursing facilities and making sure that you partnered with our EMS, our fire department, to go in and educate all of our skilled nursing facilities, senior living facilities, and do as much as you could to harden them and make sure that, you know, we didn't see what we were seeing in other parts of the country. And there were constant decisions here and there, but I'll just say, when you look back on the numbers and the case rates and the case counts, and we should have been hit a lot harder as a city because of the fact that we are an older community. There is no question that, given just all things being equal, this would have been a very difficult, we should see higher numbers, we should see higher case rates, we should see higher hospitalizations, and frankly, we probably should have seen a higher death rate, but for the fact that a lot of our residents were really fortunate that they were retired, they didn't have to go to work. A lot of our residents were able to work from home. A lot of other communities couldn't say the same thing. And so this is a fortunate community, and we need to recognize there are demographic reasons for the abilities for us to weather this and come out okay. But I will point out that, as a matter of just straight case rate, Newport Beach, and just comparing Orange County, not even going into LA, but comparing to Orange County, Newport Beach is a matter of overall case rate compared to population. So it's not just, I'm not just unfairly saying, comparing us to a city that's much larger. We were in, I think, the bottom six out of 34 cities on case rate. We were, we actually, I was looking at it today as a matter of ZIP code. Four of our ZIP codes were in the bottom 20 in case rate, in significantly more than 20 ZIP codes, and two of them actually were in the bottom six. There's a lot to be said about the way that things worked out for our city. There are obviously ways to improve, and I do hope that none of us up here ever have to experience this again in a lifetime, let alone from the diocese. But given the response that we've had at the city level, especially last year, I just want to say thank you, especially to our department heads, to our city manager, for getting up and running in just extraordinary moments last year. Because we're seeing the ability to finally lift our local state of emergency. I do think, as a matter of just simple principle, that governments ought to give up their declared states of emergency the moment they can no longer justify their states of emergency. We may be a little bit past that as a city, but we're doing it at the first realistic opportunity after June 15th. And so, given that the state of emergency findings require us to find extreme peril in a way that would not allow us to properly respond and it would overrun our resources, I don't believe that we can make those findings any longer, and we should remove our declared emergency. So there's a lot there. I'm sure I could speak for much longer, but I'm going to stop and just simply say, I'm glad that we're finally here. Thank you.
Mr. Blom?
Thank you, Mayor. This is probably one of the most exciting things to happen up on the diocese for me personally, as this was a huge reason why I even ran for city council. It's no secret that I don't like big government. I think it's the people that are built to rule, that government acts as an instrument to help us get to where we need to be, but it's the people that make the decisions. And state of emergencies always make me nervous because it does consolidate power. I give our city so much credit because we never abuse that. And when it was time to give it up, we weren't last in line, we weren't fighting against it. When we brought it up to city staff, they were so gracious and wonderful, saying, yes, whatever we can do to move forward. And I think that's a testament to the city we live in, that we always shoot for transparency, we always shoot for the input of the residents. And I know we're not perfect. I know we're always striving for something better. I know that we can always improve on certain things. But this is one of those bookends where I look at how other cities fared in this, and Will touched upon it briefly, but from the business side and how this city fared was phenomenal. We gave freedom even though we held the power. And I think that's something that's really important. Our police were some of the most exemplary in the nation, not just in the county, on the way they handled this. The city staff and what they were willing to do was second to none. And I think it's proven not only in how we were able to work with our budget, how we were able to keep up our services, how we didn't get rid of our staff, how we kept fighting as long as we could for what we believed was right, whether it was our beaches, whether it was keeping things open, whether it wasn't forcing people to make decisions they didn't want to make. And we're one of the first cities in Orange County to give up this emergency power. And I think that no one wants to be the first when it comes to these types of things. It takes something that's much stronger than any individual. It takes the group of everybody in the city to come together and decide, hey, we're stronger without these little crutches and these abilities to make decisions unilaterally. And I think that's one of the most important things we can do. And so I'm so thankful for city staff for making this happen. I'm just proud to be up here for that. Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you. Yeah, it's been quite a year. This is going to look back, or someone's going to look back on this and they're going to write a legal book, or it's going to be a lecture or two in law school, because everything that could have been done was done, including abuses of power. And those abuses of power, violating procedures, separation of power, total disregard for statutory limits on emergency powers, no desire to confer and get the consent of the people, the courts, or the legislature, is really remarkable. And numerous defeats in the courts and the reality of open states like Texas and Florida have really made California, I think, see that this is not just some tunnel that we exist in complete darkness. There is a light in the tunnel. There are other communities that had that light available to them at a sooner time, and they've had their numbers plummet. For me, as a lawyer, it's interesting because I could argue that the disparate outcomes that different states had and the processes that were followed by those states had a correlation. And I also could argue that I would err on the side of freedom, and I think education is better than mandates. But where I know I will win and where I think history will show the failures are the violation of procedures and separation of powers. And those were handed down in common law because those were often abused to get an unjust end. So the means do not justify the ends. And this is an amazing case study of that exact, that exact reality. So thank you, Councilman O'Neil, for spearheading this and Noah, Mr. Blom, Councilman Blom. I obviously was big on this too, and we had to find a balance. And the final civics lesson, I hope that I'm not too patronizing today, the final civic lessons is that local government is set up as a sub-jurisdiction of a state under the 10th Amendment. And so really, our hands are really tied. We can fight for freedom and for beaches and stress education and encouragement to be open. But at the end of the day, those police powers fall under the 10th Amendment to the governor and the state legislature. And we would have done this a lot sooner if we could have. So I'm glad we're here today, but it was quite a journey, and I hope that everyone learned from it that you have to protect your rights, otherwise they're going to continue to be abused for as long as someone get away with it.
Ms. Dixon?
Well, I can't say it any better than the three colleagues who have spoken, but I just will say it's letting Newport Beach celebrate Independence Day a little bit early. And this is our Independence Day. We've been chafing at the bit for 15 months. But I would like to clarify with the city attorney, the governor still is operating under emergency powers. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we'll be free. We are free, to the extent we can be, I guess. I don't know what edict he can mandate, but we are going to be free, to the best of our ability.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Well done. Thank you.
Any other council comments on this item? All right, going out to the public for items 15 and 16.
Mayor Avery, members of the council, on item 15, I remain concerned, as I was in writing, about the statement in the staff report that it remains unclear if the termination of the local emergency will in any way limit the city's access to additional funds for federal or state resources or reimbursements related to the pandemic. I hope before you vote on this, staff can clarify if they understand that better now than they did at the time the staff report was written. I see that the council has received lots of emails that are in the lobby urging you to make a political statement about the emergency. But I am concerned, this might be kind of like when the city council... But I am concerned, this might be kind of like when the city council voluntarily was going to refuse to accept gas tax money and then later had to backtrack on this. If it turns out that this would make us ineligible for the relief we were expecting to receive, this would be much more difficult to backtrack on. It would be very difficult now to declare that we do have an emergency after we've said that we don't. So I hope we're clear on whether this has any financial impacts on us or not in terms of eligibility for relief that we might otherwise be eligible for. Thank you.
All right, Mr. O'Neil. All right, any further public comment?
Good evening, Charles Klob again, mayor, members of the city council. I hadn't planned to speak on this tonight, but to echo what Mr. Mosher is saying, it's worth noting that today, the Orange County Board of Supervisors voted unanimously to continue the emergency strictly because of access to federal money. It was clearly discussed, there were 87 people that spoke mostly in favor of making the political statement. I happen to agree with the statement. But like Mr. Mosher, I would like clarification that we're not going to limit ourselves from access to federal money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? All right, Mr. O'Neil.
Yeah, I mean, I have a very clear statement on that, but I'll go to staff first and see if there's a response to that question.
Well, I think like everything else with the pandemic, you know, everybody's going through this for the first time, so we don't have complete clarity. I do, I will say, though, we've put in for everything that we have through this emergency period of time for reimbursement to FEMA and any other avenues that we can. We do have our first of two installments on the American Recovery Rescue Plan Act from the federal government. Those payment, that payment in, in our bank account. And we'll be coming back to council certainly on, you know, the disbursement of that. So I think the main concern we have is if there are additional expenses, for example, like additional vaccination clinics past this point of time, if there... And we don't know, we don't know if we would not get reimbursed for those. So that's the main area that we have potential concern of.
Yeah, so I'm going to speak to this for just a second. When we were dealing with the gas tax money, there was abundantly clear that we were eligible for it because we have roads. We can certify we have roads. It's very easy to say we have roads. The problem here is, in order to maintain an emergency, we have to, under the statute, continue to find that we have an extreme peril situation where the local authorities inadequate to cope with the threat posed by COVID-19. We cannot make that finding any longer. It's not a political statement. It is a legal statement. And we have to, if we cannot make those findings, we should not go seek money based on false findings. It's not a complicated issue. Even if there was money somewhere that we would be able to go after, we would be doing it under false pretenses. And the county is a healthcare agency. There are different standards for them. There is something that maybe, maybe they need to do something, I don't know. But they're a healthcare agency. We're not. Cities are not. Cities need to grapple with whether this is a legal finding or not. But that's, we can't make this finding any longer. And if we can't make a finding, we cannot go seek money based on a false finding. So it's really important to understand there's a significant difference. And I would never sign my name, and I wouldn't expect our mayor to either, seeking reimbursement for a false finding. So that's important to note. And again, it kind of comes back to that issue of should governments have an emergency beyond the time when the emergency exists? And if the only answer is money, they're doing it for a horrific reason. Thank you.
Mr. Blom.
I just really like, quickly to echo what Councilmember O'Neil and Councilmember Muldoon have said, the city of Newport Beach is not for sale, as Councilman Muldoon just motioned over, that we can stand on our own two feet. We do not need an emergency power to do so. I understand there may be federal money that could directly come to us. And why that always sounds nice to take the handout. Unfortunately, in this city, we don't have a problem right now. And we want to go forward with all of our integrity intact, doing what we've done for so long. We don't need the federal government to support us if there's not a problem. And right now, there is not a problem. And so I'd like to take the politics out of it and look around our community and realize our kids are playing in the parks, our junior guards are going, our businesses are opened, we're planning film festivals and boat parades. There is no emergency going on in the city of Newport Beach. And so if this is a monetary question, and if you've been sitting in this audience for a while, you know I'm concerned about monetary questions, this is not one of those. That's not our money. We don't have an emergency. Thank you.
Ms. Dixon.
Just one final comment, just to clarify. If there is some national emergency, another wave, a national crisis, we could agree to declare, if we chose to, an emergency on a moment's notice. We could have a special meeting, just like we did before. So this is the right path to take. If there's some cataclysmic event, we will deal with it responsibly. Whatever needs to be done, we will evaluate all options. But right now, this is the right way to go. I think we're on the path for liberation. Okay, thanks.
Any other council comment?
Mr. Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
All right. So for me, this was just an incredible journey for me personally, and I think for everybody in this country. And, you know, everybody has a different level of fear when something like this comes along. Some people are just absolutely frozen, as many were. Others are highly operational. Everyone had a different perspective on all of it. And I would just like to say, I am so impressed with the ultimate result, as difficult as it was. And it really brought us to some real existential questions in our country and in our county and our community. But I was amazed, really, when things really got rolling at the county, at our county level. I mean, you know, the federal government is the federal government. It's just an absolute bull in a china closet. And there's not much that can help us directly. And the state is the same. But when we got to the county, and I just, the whole experience of going through getting vaccinated was incredible to me about the look on people's faces, the gratefulness, the relief, the kindness that I saw at SoCal both trips, extraordinary. I think for our public safety folks, our lifeguards, our police, I just think they did an incredible job. You really have to think back about the protests, the tension, the tension in their families because they're out there dealing every day in this pandemic. And it just was, I don't think any town was better run through this pandemic than us. And I'm not, I think all of us on council don't take that much credit. We're really looking at all of our, all of our staff, all the employees of the city just turned to, it's great leadership by our city manager and our department heads. I got to tell you, it's just, for me, it was overwhelming that through the very dark start of it, to come out in such a blossoming, if you will. Soon as those vaccines started to hit, it was just like immediate. You saw the numbers change, and you saw the power of it and the direction we were going. And the way this council worked, Mayor O'Neil last year, just an incredible job when we just basically got hit by a bus to kind of keep the ship steady. So I just, I'm just grateful that we've all gotten here. And I think, you know, obviously, most of us are, or all of us are. And we can take a little credit, but I think we have to just look at our neighbors and each other and just realize that we were all in this, and people participated on an incredible level, especially in this town, how smooth it was. I mean, we look north, south, you saw what happened in different cities. It was just, it was like, I was sort of hoping, you know, I said, well, how can this? We're just running so smoothly. So we got through it. And we live and work in a great city.
No one was laid off?
No one was laid off, no. We don't do that. I mean, you know, that's the other thing, our dedication, I think, all of us, to our staff, employees of this city, we do everything we can, right, to hold on, and we did. And so there's some things, we have differences on the council, but there's just so much we come together on, and that's what's really important. So I thank everybody for their participation in this incredible voyage that we've been on. And it's not quite over, but keep an eye out to weather, as they say in the sailing world.
All right, so we're through item 15 and 16.
Mayor, we need to vote. We need to vote on item 15.
Got caught up in my soliloquy.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, next on the agenda is motion for reconsideration, Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Thank you. And tonight, are there any motions for reconsideration, by the way?
Sure.
Okay, yes. Tonight, we are adjourning in memory of Dean Botorff and Councilmember Brenner. Oh, you don't? Okay, so then we're adjourned. Sure. We'll do it next meeting.